I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, first, I'd like to thank you for getting this through those first meetings here. And hopefully in the future, it goes just as smooth. I'd also like to pray for all those families who, as we get closer to the holidays, that have an empty seat that wasn't empty before. Lastly, Lord, I'd like to pray for all those serving abroad and home, so we're able to practice our freedoms. In your name we pray. Alright. The reading approval of minutes in the last meeting. Motion approved or suspended? Uh, motion? Second. And a second. Any discussion? Corrections? None? Take a vote? All in favor? Alright. All opposed, same side? Motion passes. Uh, approval of the agenda?
I did put the Christmas tree back on there since I got a couple of... Couple of proposals.
Not yet.
Motion to approve the agenda, as presented.
It's motion? Second. There's a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion passes.
I'm getting the engineer's.
Yep.
Did you wait or remember if we need to roll call or not? Is it your spending money or not?
Hey, Grant.
Hey, Grant. We've got you on the speakerphone in the commission room.
Perfect.
Okay, you can go ahead, Grant.
Sound good. Have you gone through any of the engineers' report yet, Monty?
We have not.
Okay. So essentially, right now, the only work going on in town is DC Steel finishing up the sanitary sewer rehab project. Um, the only thing they have left to do yet this year is manual rehab. They should be returning, they should have returned today, and they'll be working through the week. My guess is they'll probably finish on this trip here and be done for the year. We also asked them to touch up the, um, gravel patches before winter shutdown for the year, just so they're drivable. So I'll have them work with Dave on that, just touch those up, so they're in good shape here for winter. And then they'll be returning in the, in the spring to pave the asphalt patches, and that'll be it. So that'll wrap up that project. Any questions on the sanitary sewer project?
No.
Perfect. And then the other thing, um, that was brought up today is just traffic control near the old WRT building, which sounds like is a TT building. Um, any specific items or background you guys wanna talk about before I jump in, jump into anything?
Um, this is Jesse, Grant. Um, it's basically, that was the old West River building. And, um, what I've noticed is, there's really... So kids come in and out of the occupational therapy building all day long. And it's right, right off the street. And they had plastered signs all over their doors saying, you know, watch out, 'cause cars are coming around the corner and things like that. Previously, there was no real reason for people to watch for pedestrians all, all too often throughout there. But now with the kids, and these people have signed a three-year lease with that building at the location, so there's gonna be kids coming in and out of there and on First Street. So it's the corner of First Street and First Avenue, so they're coming out of the west side of the building, and then from what it sounds like, they might be starting to utilize the south side of that building, too. Um, and basically, I think there's just a yield sign on First Avenue. And First Street is a, is just the through street there. Um, yeah, and like I said, there hasn't really been pedestrian crossing and stuff like that through that area, hasn't been all too common. I mean, maybe up towards the post office, people coming and going from the West River building, but it's, it's basically that, that, the corner. So when people are coming out from First Street, turning north onto First Avenue, there, there's issues, and then, I mean, from what it sounds like, too... Nobody's necessarily breaking the speed limit at twenty-five, but twenty-five's kinda quick through there with the diagonal parking that it is, and just the increase of kids coming in and out of that building, too.
That makes sense. Um, so I know a yield sign now, and then no control on the other, the, the other direction.
Yep.
So a lot of times with change use, it can also change your traffic control needs, so I think that's kinda what you're seeing here. Um, sometimes when you're looking at stop sign, yield sign, different traffic control, you can do traffic studies. I wouldn't recommend it for this. Um, this isn't necessarily something that a traffic study would show. More so just a different use. So there's, there're different types of traffic calming you can do. You could do a big flashing, crossing sign. Doesn't sound like crossing is necessarily the issue. Um, you could do, like, the little turtle guys that you have with the sign that says slow down, kids that play, things like that. Just something simple like that would be an option. Um, but you could have law enforcement just take a look at it here for a few weeks or something like that, and see if it does warrant changing to a, to a, um, stop control intersection on that one, but wouldn't recommend a traffic study. It's more so just a, a use would be what would permit that change on this one, so...
Sure.
It's not something I would recommend us be involved in too much. I mean, we can help with sign placement if you guys do decide to go that route, but it'd be, it'd be a steel-type thing. Um, does it feel like it needs one? Does law enforcement recommend it? Something like that, so... If it's something that law enforcement would think is recommended, go to a stop control intersection on this one, just due to the, the traffic of kids.
Okay.
But, I mean, uh, there's other more severe or, like, bigger options. You could do a speed table or speed bumps, but then you're, you're digging into the road, you're adding things, and there's a cost with that, and it's special accepted to the building, but I'm sure that's not something they're interested in, so... Uh, the easy option would just be, is, is there a stop control warranted on this one?
Perfect. Sounds good.
Any questions on that?
No, that's kinda what I was thinking, too, so, I mean, it, it makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, and then if there's anything needed or followed, just let us know, but otherwise, we'll leave it to you guys to handle that.
Awesome, thank you.
Anything else for me on the engineers' report?
Doesn't appear to be.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Take care.
Thank you. What would you guys wanna tackle? I could pass it along to Jim to have the officers patrol that a little more and see what they're seeing. Is it traffic traveling north and south that's the issue?
It's both directions. Well, it's because people are coming east on or west on First Street, turning north onto First Avenue.
And they're just cutting the corner pretty fast?
Uh, it's not even really fast. It's, again, like, you never really had to pay attention to pedestrians.
People are most are parking across the street, the diagonal. A lot?
Sometimes, yeah. 'Cause I know it's usually full up right along the front of the building, but even when people are coming out to put their kids in the car and stuff like that, too.
Just that coming around the corner?
Coming around the corner, and...
That, what, that what-if?
Yeah.
But there's a stop sign going south, right? And you...
It's either with a yield sign.
It's a yield sign.
So the north-south should have yields on both. How would I imagine?
Yeah, it's probably a yield on First Avenue and the other side, too.
Yeah. But there's nothing, nothing east or west.
Right. And, like, yeah, 'cause there's never, just like Grant said, you, you, the change of use of the building is...
Right.
You know what we're talking, Jesse?
Yeah, right there.
I'll pass it along to Jim to have the officers patrol a little more, then we'll go back.
For a bit, 'cause nobody's, nobody, there's like no inherent traffic violation itself, it's just, it's...
Traffic pattern changes.
Just, yeah, the change of the use of the building and... 'Cause I don't even think West River used that door for anything, either.
Do years do a little bit when they were actually in there, 'cause they had people going back and forth.
Yeah, back and forth. They would, they would cross up by the alley, though, too, a lot of the times, from that.
Well, and I think they still use the warehouse, but I mean, as for in that physical building, I don't think West River does anything, either.
No, they weren't. Nothing, people.
Several years.
Yeah. Yeah, besides, I just watch it all.
Well, Jim will go back to us, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Cool. Anything else? Outstanding. Alright, go down to reports.
Five B.
Five B?
Oh, sorry, five B. So I was confused on, uh, do we, we have to submit this form?
It'll actually be submitted for us as part of the empty street project where there have been the underpass through for pedestrians, vice versa. It was requested by the board quite some time ago. I just wanted approval for me to sign this, so they can send it in.
So do we need a motion for you to sign?
Yep.
So... Got a motion?
Second.
And a second.
Which one? You gotta call which one.
Focus. He said whoops. Any other discussion? Alright. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side? Motion passes. Now, now, now we can move on? Okay, I just wanna make sure. Alright, uh, reports. I don't have anything, Jesse. Okay? Thank you.
Uh, Steve's got something up his sleeve, I don't know.
Same, same order.
I know we're still cleaning leaves up.
We're chasing leaves.
They're gonna chase the leaves past our place late last week or something.
They're going again today, so...
I agree.
They're gonna be getting close, but yeah, no.
Boy, look around to summer. We're getting close to where we're already to start sucking off the storm drains for winter or whatever, 'cause the rest of the leaves added up, probably won't bother the storm drains any, so...
I've noticed it's a different drop of leaf pattern this year.
Uh-huh.
Very slow.
Yep, yep.
We all enjoy making this, it's okay.
Yeah. I have nothing else.
Okay?
Load into the neighbor's garden.
Jesse?
Uh, a couple things, um...
Oh, yeah.
So, Mr. Schifferl and I interviewed Sunny Brennan for the director position. Um, I think they interviewed her. Have you heard anything from her?
I have not.
Since? Your thoughts, Jesse?
Uh, I thought it was good.
Yeah.
I'd recommend it. Recommend her.
And I will make the motion to, uh, give her a conditional operate and drug test and all that kind of stuff. Um, full position, uh, director of transit.
Is this a full-time position or a part-time position?
Well, whole time.
Is advertised as full time.
And she, and she's willing to get her...
She hasn't.
Oh?
She just has to get her...
Possibly, with the class B and still hasn't heard.
She has a class A, pass her doors. Or C.
You confuse the grammar a bit, like...
C, she may need to be.
Twenty-six thousand one.
Weight is on buses.
If you look at the sticker, they're about twenty-three.
So she would be good then?
I would say so, but we're still waiting for the state to respond.
Because it goes off for girls, not what they actually wait.
Correct.
Right, correct, Dave?
I believe so, yes.
Whatever's printed on the door is what it should be.
Yep.
Um, you said the jury didn't usually second, but I will second because I... Oh, you did? Okay, sorry. I guess we have a second.
So back off, dude.
Uh, any other discussion, other than I, I recommend her to the position? Any other, any, no other discussion, then, uh, roll call, vote? Focus. Aye.
Weider.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Schifferl.
Aye.
Motion passes. Any other thing else, Jesse?
And then, I did not bring those printouts to that program, I was kinda wanna give these guys the heads-up model. Um, Monty had demoed this, this all-in-one, uh, program that's spent for the transit, like does everything for you, but it is pretty spenty. I just wanna put it in everybody's radar. Um, Monty, if you wanted to kinda explain that, 'cause again, I failed to bring them up.
Well, again, it's, it's basically, it covers everything from... You can get it, so it will work with tablets, so the drivers would be able to just go in. They picked up a person at this point, at this time, dropped him off at this place at this time, and, and just kind of that, you can do it, so they can send out texts to passengers that they're running late or whatever. There's all kinds of options, plus then it does a lot of the reporting. It'll generate reports that you can use to submit to the state and the federal government on a grant. Uh, implementation cost with all the bells and whistles was eighty thousand plus twenty-eight thousand annual maintenance.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty steep. It's that stupid live service model crap again, but who knows, maybe, just depending on where we end up.
That's just one vendor, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it...
Did they reach out to you, or were you actively looking?
They had actually reached out to the transit director before.
I mean, that sounds like it'd be awesome and help all the drivers and stuff.
It is a fantastic software, but can you justify that kinda cost for two hundred riders a year?
Yeah, eighty grand just to get into it, and twenty-some thousand a year.
For a... It's not an offer we wanna be on the hunt for something similar. I mean, it sounds like it's a pretty, pretty sweet deal, but...
I'm sure there's other versions that are scaled down for smaller...
Yeah, I think once you have the transit director in place, if it's accepted, then you can start working with that person to, to look at these things.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Come up with recommendations.
And, unless you have anything for finance?
Have we got anything, any other applicants for busing, or...
No, we had one, but then he got a, he got a different job for a driver, and that's been it.
So is that the one that lives in Hazen and worked at Western, or did he apply for the full-time one?
No.
Just driving.
We had, we had a gentleman who was interested in just the part-time driving position.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And he stepped in another option.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not even sure we're gonna need another.
I wouldn't think so, if we got... If Sunny takes the full-time and she's got the bus license, you know, that would kinda eliminate the other part-time person, plus Christie is filling in part-time by the sound of it.
Christie or Candy.
I would think those two next door.
'Cause either, I mean, either way, I'd like to leave a part-time, leave, leave it posted, just in case. Anything? Um... Yeah. Just in case Candy decides that she, you know, she wants to kinda be done. Uh, Jim is, I don't know if he's gonna be, wanting to be done sooner than later, or whatever, but I think it'd always be good just to have a, have a handful of applicants, just in case, kinda just...
Yeah, okay, so do you have the part-time one posted? The only problem is, you know, we do hire another part-time, it's getting them enough hours, you know?
Yeah.
To justify it. It's, not, most people don't wanna be, I'll work five hours this week and next three weeks, I get nothing, you know?
Yeah.
Shit, so, so...
Other than that, that's all I got.
Okay. Justin?
Uh, all I got is another report for the department, calls to service for the police department. Officer Ronnie had fifty-six. Sergeant Melberg had forty-one. Officer Melberg had sixty, and Chief Woke had forty-one. That's all I got.
Um, I attended a CD meeting last week, was last week. Um, they did some reassignments on their board, and, uh, they will have an annual meeting in February. That's all I have. Um, moving down. Welcome sign? We have a couple estimates?
Well, I have one estimate.
One?
The other information was the actual cost that Hazen Winter Sports paid for their sign.
Oh, okay.
Was eighty thousand. And then man signs did come up. And actually, it was reviewed, the current structure there, and provided some options for an eight-millimeter or a ten-millimeter sign thickness. And came up with a scale drawing.
So they wouldn't be able to put where that white existing?
The corrugated white.
Yeah, the corrugated whites.
No, that has to come up. They can't put their sign over top of that.
Okay. So regardless, that sign would have to go.
Uh, but you're saving the structure, which will probably save you a ton of money.
Oh, yeah, that thing's solid.
Oh.
Would they come up with a...
For the eight-millimeter, it was a hundred and sixteen thousand, I believe. Hundred and, oh, hundred and six for the eight-millimeter, hundred and eleven thousand. Well, hundred and twenty-one, excuse me, I forgot the labor part. One twenty-one for the thicker sign, one sixteen for the thinner sign.
Those are cellular-enabled, too, huh?
I was wondering how they did that, if you had to get a heater and that cable to them, or...
Yeah.
It's a lot of money, but...
You know, I'm just wondering, I, I grimmed, that's, it's a lot of money, but if a guy could... And I'm gonna use, I'm gonna use the schools, the scoreboard at the football field, the scoreboard. And we're doing more, uh, Isaac Booster advertising dollars to help fund that, 'cause I mean, they're, they're looking at down the road redoing the scoreboard in the gym, going to the Walmart. I'm wondering if a guy could talk with some, you know, the Bakes, the Rainbow Energy, Kato, or the Freedom Mind, whatever, and see if they, I mean, it's...
Help throw some money at this kind of thing?
Well, and be able to somehow get signs and mount them to that underneath, you know, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, I was like, they're...
Like sponsorship, sponsored by, yeah.
You could either do that or do just like Kathy's, where it flashes up, you, you pay X amount to have it had placed on there for...
Yeah.
Yeah, things being that, scrolled out, eh?
Yeah, it's a great idea, but who's gonna monitor?
I was gonna say, so we...
The agreements.
Exactly.
We do that for Hazen Winter Sports, and it's very conversant.
Yeah.
It is, okay.
Well, you gotta create it and then make sure that it only runs for X amount of time, 'cause I know they paid for it.
It'd be easier to put a sign, or, you know, a banner at the bottom, like a permanent banner?
Sponsors.
For sponsors? I don't know, that's, that's a lot of money.
Way harder than I thought it would be.
Yeah, I just didn't know if they could, if they'd stick it to retrofit, but I get that.
We can always look at sponsorships and send some letters on, get a feel for it, but I don't think we're gonna get close to that cost.
I don't know.
I mean, I could, I guess it doesn't hurt to...
I don't know. What do you think, Casey?
Even if you look at the size of the trees, or... You know, if you drive down the road and stuff, it's, it's kind of, I guess, like, hard to see, you know?
Yeah, the trees are all...
Yep, it is.
So, I mean...
It is. And I do get the, you know, that sign has been here for forever, I do get that, and I just don't wanna... I wish there was something we could, I mean, do we refer back to seeing what Mrs. Haldie and their art program would be able to do to uh, beautify that sign and keep, I don't know. It's kinda like a staple to Hazen, that sign.
What was that? Do we know what that was put up, Monty?
I don't have...
Just gonna say, that's the case, you probably remember it as your kids.
Nineties, I'm gonna say, early nineties for me. More than likely, more than likely, I guess, more than likely, than is that school that was probably built.
At that time.
Hmm, yeah.
Yeah. What should I think, the late, the early eighties?
Ninety-two or something, that school built, I don't know.
Late eighties, early nineties.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there other companies we could check with, or do you guys think it'd be pretty consistent across the board?
I think it'll be pretty consistent in my, my, when you look at...
Yeah, because you can learn sports. Eight thousand, yeah, for that size one.
And that one's not that big.
But that was including all...
The whole thing.
Yeah. The whole post it sits on and everything, and...
Well, I'd aim for whatever it is.
I, I can't imagine, if you go with a different company, it'd be more than a ten-thousand-dollar swing either way, you know? I just didn't get that big of a TV screen that costs that much.
Monty, you get quotes on, like, sixteen-foot televisions and see what else?
I don't know, personally, I guess I'm not super, I don't know, there's like a sticker shock there, I guess, and... Yeah. Are there other things that, in the city, that for a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, that, you know, might... I don't know, might be better used? I'm not saying better used, but also needed, that's maybe more of a priority?
Yeah.
I'm not saying, no, I'm just...
Yep. You guys want me to check then with the school and see or not, or I'd be willing to do that, see, I don't know?
Maybe as well, I'll be an idea.
'Cause that could, I mean, it's not gonna cost me anything to talk to Mrs. Haldie.
'Cause, I mean, what's, so... It's either that or the whole thing comes down eventually, right, I mean...
Yeah, I would, I would think.
I would think there's has to be some, like, affordable options for retrofitting. I mean, this is, I understand, like, the technology differences and stuff like that, but if, like... I know this is like top of the line best thing to get, pardon my, best, but probably right up there, but simple, like, scroll boards or something, like, something not...
Like a single-color or something even, maybe?
I mean, they have multi-color ones, but something that's a little more... And then if it, then if it's something that gained traction, that was, that it was affordable, that could go to the next step, instead of like...
I can do some more checking. See, you know, what's available through Dectronics for... As you said, just a single scroll.
As a company, I was trying to figure, yes.
If you have time, Monty, but if you don't, I understand.
Make time.
You, you, a lot of things are stacked on you.
Just let me know, Monty, and then...
Okay.
I can, based off of what you find, and then I can, uh, talk to Mrs. Haldie about it after you investigate it. Is that fair?
The trees came in cheaper.
Okay?
Holy sign.
Christmas tree?
Yeah.
I did get a response from two different vendors regarding Christmas trees. Uh, Mosca Designs has a pop-up tree, eleven feet. Uh, after the discount, the price of the tree is two thousand sixty-five with five ninety-five shipping. They were two-week production and brought approximately five days after production to get it shipped here. That's kind of an idea of what it looks like.
Eleven foot, you said, Mont?
This is for an eleven-foot tree. This is for an eleven-foot tree. And then I did also get a response from Display Sales, who we have asked. Their twelve-foot tree pre-lit is fifty-nine hundred with, uh, twelve hundred and seventy-five shipping.
The other one was pre-lit as well, Monty?
Yeah, the other one was pre-lit as well, yes.
And they're both pop-ups or one's a panel and one's a pop-up?
It sounded like this one's a panel maybe, or no?
It doesn't actually say.
Frame tree.
But it's got, it's got a very big base. It's a twelve-foot by a hundred and five-inch base, so it's rather large at the bottom.
Oh, yeah, it is.
How, how big is the base of the other one? Does it say or no?
I thought it said a four-foot.
That one might fit better in that area.
The other thought was the canopy is supposedly thirteen feet nine inside, so the idea was that this could go inside. You can at least tie it off to the four posts, so it wouldn't, it'd be less likely to disappear in the end.
What's the height of that canopy in a living?
Thirteen nine thirteen.
So this one would fit in there?
Mm-hmm.
It's literally what Monty just said.
Did it hear that echo?
The only thing is, it's only ten feet at the outside edges, so it would fit in there, but you wouldn't necessarily see it.
Have I approved that first one?
Second.
Motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Was there any other, uh, quotes with this, those two, Mark?
Just those two.
Okay. And is this one, you said a pop-up, is that like putting it together, like traditionally?
Yeah.
With branches and all that?
Something like that.
Yeah, it's got a frame and then you have to work around it.
Did?
Yeah. Who would be?
What's your thoughts?
We never did circle back, we never did talk about who would be responsible for it, putting it up? And where it would be stored and all that. We touched on it, we said, Antoinette was like, that's something you guys need to discuss. And we never did.
The other thing is power.
Can you go to that?
We don't have power in that canopy. Would've been really nice to prove, pre-thought about that before they get that ass concrete. Ran it over from that pole over.
You know, blow the legs?
Yeah.
Son of a gun.
I just thought of that now. That would've been a super awesome if we would've done that, but.
Aw, man.
Could've came. Is there an outlet on that pole already?
There's an outlet on the pole in front of Jensen Jewelry, but not the one on the corner.
Right.
Okay, not the one on the corner.
Also, we've got an extension cord from that one over.
Yeah. You guys always hung that aerial before, right?
Yeah.
To that tree that used to be there?
A cable run across to that corner pole for Christmas or whatever.
Yeah, I think I remember seeing that aerial. I mean, we could still do that, run an aerial to the canopy.
Yeah.
Keep in mind, we got those, we got those donated lights too, from, uh, what you call it?
Yeah, DODI.
DODI, yeah.
I know Chamber was discussing different power options for that corner too, for their events.
Yeah, they were.
I mean, we found a much more affordable option.
Yeah, and can get here in time, or if we get a few people together, we can get it up before. Two, you know?
Not before Thanksgiving, though. I'm just kidding. I know, some people kind of don't support that.
I think we just skip, I mean, go straight, straight to Christmas night.
As far as where we're gonna store it, well, I mean, there's a big building over there that's sitting empty for now.
That's true, we did, we did talk about that.
Does she have any more?
It could be cleaned up too, about it, shed out back here.
Oh, I did talk to Antoinette, she said upstairs.
I was gonna say, is there any more room upstairs?
Depending on what it's like.
She said there's a lot of stuff that could be gone through up there.
Okay.
Um, so I don't know if it, I've never been up there, so I don't know how full it is. I don't know how much space this is gonna be.
A lot of headroom up there. Do you wanna hack a Christmas tree like that upstairs?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, it could pack up into a normal Christmas tree-sized box or all being all. I wouldn't think so, but. We got that loft area out at the shop where we keep all the ornaments that we hang on the poles on Main Street. I mean, there's room up there for it, too.
Okay.
And as far as putting it up, we just gotta get some volunteers.
Just get some people together, right?
Yeah. We can have Antoinette put something out on Facebook, ask them for volunteers on a certain date and.
Making a, making a homeville in that, man?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we have a s- with a motion and a second. You vote call vote.
Waderick.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Folkerts.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Shiffrill.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, twelve A. Uh, there are two appointments, the Hazen, or Huett, did you put this on your mind?
Yes, the Housing Authority, yes.
Two appointments to the Hazen Housing Authority, finding apartments boards with only one person that we contacted with interest. Sue Kahoon contacted us, in case she'd be willing to serve, expired term with Darcy. There will be one vacant seat. Someone interested in serving on the special assessment.
Yeah, that's a, that's a March point, that's the, we'll just kind of put the order, I don't need it when you're looking for somebody for that.
So on the Housing Authority, Monty, how many, let's see, Sue's question mark?
Let's see, just look at the dates here, please.
I just need her and that empty one. How many do you need on the, on that board?
Five.
Five for sure. I'll just double check.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
Well, I'll make a motion to appoint Sue Kahoon.
Second. A motion and a second to appoint Sue Kahoon. Any other discussion? With none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All pose same sign.
Now, is that other vacant spot, can we advertise that?
We'll just keep that, so I'm just gonna have to.
As far as, even like the, uh, was it the zoning one that you're looking for? Or no, the special assessment? I didn't even know that was out there. Like, I knew we had a special mint, but I, I don't know where you've been advertising, but I haven't seen.
I haven't advertised that yet.
Gotcha.
Smart.
Mr. Petrodovski just left this hall.
Gotcha, okay.
How do you pronounce this?
Yeah.
It's a little, Kreberdovski.
Oh, I wouldn't, I haven't, yeah.
Yeah, sure. Um, can I see Jerry's still on the zoning?
Yeah, that'll change, yeah.
Okay.
You get to?
Me?
Yeah.
When and how often do they meet?
As needed.
Okay, all right, got it.
So we get nervous.
Yeah, I walked in the other day when ACD was, oh, yeah, by the way, they have a meeting today. Oh, yeah, that's my. I was, I'll be there.
Yeah, I know.
Right after this interview, I'm, I'm, I'll be there.
Well, that was.
When these.
That day, so right after that.
When these empty seats come available, I think we just need to do a better job of advertising that we're looking for people for them.
Well, yeah, but we're not gonna advertise a March appointment now.
But it's already, is he still in there until March, or is it vacant, vacant?
No, he's vacant. It's vacant now because he is no longer here, but there is no projects to assess right now either, so the appointment isn't necessarily required at this moment.
You're still a good point there. That one might be a tough one to fill.
I would want it.
I mean, there's no way I would want it to be, no.
Please do not put my name there.
Jesse Shiffrill is.
Okay, anything else? Am I missing anybody?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, can we circle back to mine since Jim's here now?
Yes.
Um, was it First Avenue and First Street?
Yep.
Southwest, southwest down there by the old West River Building there? I guess there's been some complaint in the traffic there that it's a therapy place now? Can we patrol that for a few weeks and see if we need to add stop signs to that, or?
It's not necessarily a complaint, though.
Not really, yeah.
Yeah.
A safety concern, not so much a complaint. Um, just see if we need to add stop signs, like, or what's your guys' opinion?
First and.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's 'cause there was no really, you know, but there's really no real, there was, you know, there's really no pedestrian traffic there, but now since it's seven oh one physical therapy, there's kids coming out in and out of there, they have science plots sitting on their doors, they can't watch out for the traffic, 'cause people are just, like, coming west on on First Avenue and turning up First Street like they've always done, it's never been a big deal, but now since kids are coming out of the building and stuff like that, it's it's kind of getting chaotic and hazardous up there, so we're on the phone with the engineer, and he basically recommended if you guys could keep an eye on that, like, if there is any news for signage that needed. And then, 'cause nobody's inherently, like, there's no violations inherently taking place, it's just, like, kind of close call things, you know?
Okay. You have anything else to add under your stuff? No?
Yes, you've.
Well, I think that's it.
Cool.
Oh. Public comments? And then approval bills?
Yeah, we're only asking, see if there's any public comments.
Any public comments? Seeing none? Uh, approval bills?
Motion approved bills are presented.
Motion to approve as presented, second. And we have a second, Mr. Folkerts? Any other discussion or questions?
So I just got a question. Question, Monty? On the survey, on that water, water building, I guess, why was that done, or?
So we knew what we're selling. Part of the land that's going with the building, we moved it just past the underground reservoir, 'cause that was included in the, what you guys wanted included in the sale was the underground reservoir and the building. So we added survey to actually mark the location that will be sold. So when you get an offer, you know what you're selling.
So their survey pin?
It was done, done in a while ago.
No.
And stuff, we just gotta fill all.
No, it was just done this fall.
Oh, okay. So then on the original, and, and on that, on the reservoir, it wasn't initially part of it, is that what the deal is, or?
No, it, the reservoir was always part of it, it was just the fact that those are all twenty-five-foot wide lots. And we were selling a portion that wasn't right on the property line, twenty-five-foot lots. So we had a survey, so we know exactly where that reservoir is and where we're stopping. You know, whoever makes the offer knows this is my land up to this point.
Well, I suppose we didn't move a pin though, right?
No, we did not move any pins, they added a pin for the location.
So then on the fence then, their stuff is that, like, pretty much the property line, or not?
It's actually, the fence is well within the property line on the north side. And it goes actually past on the east side now from where we're gonna sell, so.
Okay.
One other thing I didn't include, I, um, that trailer we condemned up on Tenth Street by the tennis courts there, that is scheduled to be pulled out tomorrow. Mr. Falsing is going to pull it out to the landfill. He had quoted me thirty-five hundred dollars to do that. If, when I spoke to him today, he said that was still a firm cost for him. So if he brings me an invoice tomorrow or the next day, just would like your approval to go ahead and pay that up to thirty-five hundred dollars as part of the bills.
Guess I don't have a landfill bill on that then, too?
Yeah, we will, and that'll all be charged back to the trailer house owner.
So they're not, they're vacating that again? 'Cause didn't, did you, or was?
We condemned it last year, it was, they had until June first to remove it. We were hoping to get state funding, which we never got, but now that the land is for sale, the trailer does have to get off of there, so.
And you're talking about where the Falsings lived before?
No.
The one across?
Across the street.
To the east.
To the east, yes.
Got you.
Yep.
Yeah.
They got the hitch welded on yesterday.
Okay. Just add it to the bills as presented? Do you want?
Or if you wanna do a separate motion to approve that one, since you've already got a motion and a second on this one.
Any other discussion on the current bill as presented? Has none, uh, vote call vote?
Waderick.
Aye.
Folkerts.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Shiffrill.
Aye.
So then the separate bill for the removal of the trailer house, for thirty, up to thirty-five hundred? A motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion, questions on that?
Monty, if you could, boy, leave us, Terry, thinking about turning up the penny streets. You know? So he doesn't wheel. Yeah, it'd be nice if he could go out tenth, I don't know which way is the best way to go.
Up to eighteen and out.
I don't know which way the best way to go is.
More than likely gonna go Tenth Street.
Straight north, probably.
He's usually. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a pretty straight shot.
Yeah, he's pretty good, it's just. Go ahead, Derek.
Just to go back to your intersection south of the post office there, it's late in the season now, I don't have the paint, but to help that intersection or whatever, east to west or whatever, we could paint a crosswalk in there.
And you know that crossing is actually the issue, is it?
Yeah, I don't think it's necessarily crossing, it's, I think.
Okay, I don't know where we're crossing the street or whatever.
No, not so much, sure.
We could look.
We still may.
We could look into that, though.
Yeah.
Jim's, Jim and his guy watch that, maybe, maybe justify putting a crosswalk in there.
Yeah.
A motion on, yeah.
Yeah, and a second. Uh, okay, so the motion, any other discussion on the thirty-five hundred dollars? If none, vote call vote?
Folkerts, aye. Pat.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Waderick.
Aye.
Shiffrill.
Aye.
Yeah, just, we'll have Jim keep an eye on that for the crosswalk stuff, and obviously it's not gonna happen this year anymore, right?
Yeah, they have kids coming in and out all day, all morning and afternoon and stuff, so. And it really wraps up, obviously, after school.
Good.
Yeah.
Adjourned.
Cool.